The Lewiston City Council regular meeting to order December 9, 2024, 6:00 p.m. At the time and place as advertised. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand and join us in reciting the pledge, our fire chief, Chief Greg Wright-Meyer, is going to lead us in the pledge tonight. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands in our nation and indivisible, and to the justus of all.
Counselors, please remember to turn on your microphones. And I had some feedback from the public. They couldn't hear us last week. So if you're at the microphone tonight, please remember to get up on that microphone so we can hear what you have to say, and those listening at home can hear what you have to say. And then for the council, we may have to move our table top microphones a little bit closer to us. We'll move on to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are asked to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. We just need your name and city of residence. We don't need your physical address. Also, the Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting the viewpoints of others, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city. So I will open up citizen comments and welcome anyone to the microphone.
Oh, right here. Good evening. My name is Corey Williams, Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And I'm here in response to the Gwynne Fire. You know, my heart goes out to those that had to deal with the devastating impacts of the Gwynne Fire this past summer. And, you know, with the declaration, it didn't receive a presidential declaration from FEMA, but as soon as that decline was sent in, the state of Idaho decided not to appeal. So they, the state of Idaho requested for U.S. Small Business Administration to assist with those that were impacted by the Gwynne Fire. And a lot of people don't realize that in times of disaster, the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience not only helps out businesses of all sizes, but homeowners, renters, and nonprofits. Businesses can borrow up to $2 million to repair or replace the disaster damage real estate, machinery, inventory, and equipment. But the most important thing I emphasize for many of the business owners that were impacted by the Gwynne Fire is the need for working capital. And that's the purpose of the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which provides working capital to businesses to sustain themselves, to pay their mortgage operation, their leasing expenses, accounts payable, anything that was a result of Gwynne Fire being impacted. And the interest rates for businesses is as low as 4%. All of our loans carry a 12-month deferment and 12-month zero interest for the first year. And again, once that's fixed at 4% after that. And then nonprofits are treated similar to businesses where they also could borrow up to $2 million for real estate repair, real estate machinery, inventory, and equipment, as well as working capital as well. And again, interest rates for the nonprofits is at 3.25%. And then homeowners can borrow up to $500,000 to repair or replace the disaster damage real estate, and up to $100,000 to repair or replace disaster damage personal property, which may include any automobiles that were lost. And those interest rates are again as low as 2.688%, 12-month deferment, 12-month zero interest, and then any renters can borrow up to 100,000 to repair or replace the disaster damage personal property, which would include any vehicles as well at the same interest rates. Now, we have a disaster loan outreach center that's open every day of the week, Monday through Fri-- well, I'm sorry, every day of the week, every weekday, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Public Health Center. So it's at the Lewiston Public Health. And again, it's open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that center is set to close on Monday, December 23rd. So we encourage anyone, tell your friends, your family, your neighbors, anyone that may have been impacted by the Gwynne Fire. We have two great customer service representatives to help over there. So feel free to come anytime. You don't have to make an appointment at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey, thank you. Do you have a business card that you can leave? If you do, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corey.
Hi, I'm Linda Glynes from Lewiston, Idaho. I should start looking familiar here. I wanted to address you on the transitional housing project, again, that's going to be trying to attempt to come into our neighborhood. I understand that there is going to be an application for a lease, and I wanted to talk about that. You know, there's a, this whole project has kind of been slid under the rug to our neighborhood. There has been no community outreach. Nobody from that agency has come and knocked on doors and said, hey, you know, can we talk about this? So we're at the point to where we would prefer to have our park back that, you know, kind of just went by the wayside. But if you're not going to give us our park back, there are people that live and do business down in that area that would put a project in that are interested in possibly leasing or purchasing it should you surplus it, you know, that aren't going to put something in that might become a detriment to the neighborhood. And what we're asking you tonight is, when it comes up to that lease, we're going to, we've got more to say about it. We don't want it. We don't want, we do not want the project there, particularly with nobody cares what we think or what we want or our opinions, anything, because we have not had the opportunity to share that. And she has not come to us to share with us on any of it either. So again, you know, I understand, you've got a lease. I kind of feel like the lease should be opened up for anybody within the city to put an opportunity in to lease that property if they want, or surplus it. You know, I know of two businesses that are ready to go there that are not going to put in 12 more houses. I've got a property owner that would like to almost just buy it and to see if he could keep it a park. There are people that are interested in it that would benefit the residents in that neighborhood more than this will. And this project doesn't affect all these people that support it. It's a good project, but it doesn't affect all these people that are supporting it. It affects us. We're the ones that live there. They can support it, then find them a location that's supportable, because it's not where we're at.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Welcome. There you go.
A little closer. Hi.
Thank you.
I'm Angela Howard, and I live in Lewiston, Idaho. We've owned property there for years and years. As a matter of fact, sold a home to my sister-in-law in the area. And I have several friends who have homes. One person who keeps her disabled brother-in-law there in a home not far from where this project is. And I think the neighborhood deserves to be heard. And when one right after the other, I can't find one person in that neighborhood that wants to support that project at that location. And I think the neighborhood needs to be considered. And if it is coming up for lease, I do not know the laws or the statutes, but if something comes up for lease, is it a private situation between the council and that particular person, or do you put it out to the public? It would be nice to have it out to the public and get the best bang for your buck, because the city is funded by taxpayers and grants and every other state and whatever money it is that comes in for this city. And we need to hear our neighborhoods. We need to listen to them. We need to pay attention to what they would like to have. And thank you for your listening to me and for giving me this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Mike Band. I live out in East Main. And I have exactly the same saying as what Angie and Linda has talked about, besides our neighbors. I've reached out to a couple people that invest money, and they would like to be able to see the property either re-advertised as for sale or leased. They have some good ideas what they might do with that property. But then also, another person is talking about buying it and maybe putting the park as his park, if he buys the property. So I would love to see you guys put a hold on this until we have an opportune time to see that this property is going to be either listed or it's going to be for sale. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Band.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Squires. I live in Lewiston. When I purchased my house in 2016, there was a park next to it. And there was a little swing set in that park. About a year after I moved in, the swing set was deemed unusable, and it was then removed, but it was okay because we still had a field to play in. A few years later, the park was kind of abandoned by a maintenance crew, and there became too many puncture weeds to even walk through it, let alone play in it. I was hoping to see some of the equipment that was taken out of Pioneer Park placed into this park on 22nd Street and have it be returned to some of its former glory. Another thing I would like to touch on is the fire department. I used to be a firefighter in my hometown of Orfino, and the lack of health care and mental health care that was provided there was upsetting in ways. And I realized that there are full-time department down here and that they probably do receive those things, but I would like to see them have more benefits like retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Rick Glynn, so live in Lewiston. The park that everyone's talking about, as of 2018, Parks and Rec was planning on putting a sprinkler system in it, but they never did. They just ignored it and let it go. They kept blaming us when they're the ones who did it. If you guys are not going to take care of the park, you shouldn't be landlords leasing the land. Put it up for bid and sell it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Bob Blakey, 601 23rd Avenue. Happy holidays. I come up for two reasons tonight. One is Lewiston, I think, is a very, very good city, a very, we're not a huge city, we're not a small city, we're a very functional city. We're a city that's always looking forward and growing by small steps, but we are growing. Today I had an opportunity to get an email from the utility department telling me about an excessive use of water. Thank you, utility department. Thank you, Gene Gordon, for that note, and thank you for letting me know. I don't know how many cities do that in the United States. I don't know if big cities do it, little cities did it, but I had a water leak. I called Lewis North, Lewis North Apoedict, oh, I got that on my mind, called Lewiston Sprinkler. They're over there within an hour. This is what small-town Lewiston, even though we are a big city, we still have small-town values. Where else can someone come over in the next hour and fix my leak? And thank you, utility department, for being there. Now, second reason I'm up here, I feel like a proud father. Tonight, you're going to recognize two firefighters for promotions, well-earned promotions, promotions they earned by their hard work. I had an opportunity to coach both those kids when they were at Lewiston High School. And I will proudly say that I had never seen two athletes work harder in practice and in a game than both of those. And when I heard they were going to apply to be fire department or join the fire department, I was happy to write them letter of recommendations. And I knew in my heart there would be success, and it's being shown tonight. And I'll even go a step further, that I think both of these candidates tonight for promotions, one or two of them have the opportunity someday to be a fire chief. That's how hardworking they have been for the fire department. And I am proud to be a Bengal. I'm proud that they're a Bengal, and go Bengals.
Thank you, Bob.
In regards to all of these wonderful firefighters behind us, I would really like to see our council reconsider their negotiations. $45,000 seems like such a pittance in the entire scope of our budget to hire an attorney to fight for $45,000 when this is a representative of our community. They are at our doors and helping us at our worst days, and we need to be supportive and not just be fighting over such a small amount of money in the whole scope of things.
Thank you. Don't get me in trouble. Let's see if there's anyone else that would like to get comments first. If not, I'll second chance here. Anyone else? Okay, Angela, why don't you close it up for us?
Angela Howard, Lewiston, Idaho, and yes, I'm back. But I too appreciate our Lewiston firefighters. I live in a property that I see them mobile quite often, from my view, and you're always right there. And please reconsider the negotiations and congratulations to two very hard-working firefighters today with their promotions. Lewiston says thank you.
Thank you, Angela. With that, we'll close citizen comments and move on to our presentations. Roman number four, item A, promotional badge pinning, recognizing and pinning for the promotion of engineer Ryan Humphrey to the rank of captain and firefighter Henry Funk to the rank of engineer. And we have our fire chief, Greg Wright-Meyer, to make the awards tonight, recognize our two firemen.
Thank you, council mayor. We've got a couple of traditions that we go through in the history of the fire department and take oath at this point in time for both of these gentlemen to the rank of their path, and that kind of shows that it's a public way for them to demonstrate their duty and to say it to you all and to their people that are going to lead where they're at. Both of you, you will, in the round, square, please. I, you solemnly, faithfully perform the duties of responsibility of the position of the position, encourage conviction and compassion in accordance with the policies, procedures, rules, and regulations of the Lewiston Fire Department. In the city of Lewiston, county of Nez Perce, the state of Idaho, best of my knowledge, skill, and abilities. Right, if we can have, and.
Carrie Anne, you're up there. It can come over here. And again, on behalf of the council, I would like to congratulate Captain Humphrey and Engineer Funk. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to the Lewiston Fire Department. We appreciate all you do. I'm sure some of you noticed, but our city attorney, Jennifer Tangano, needed to depart early tonight. If we run into a problem tonight, I will take your questions and bring them to her tomorrow. But I think we're okay. It's a pretty benign agenda for the most part. Our next item presentation, should you have any questions, is a financial report for the month ended October 31, 2024. In accordance with Idaho code, Title 50, Chapter 22, O8, Finance Director Gordon. Counselors, any questions? If not, we'll move on. We got one month into the calendar here, okay? Next, we'll move to Roman numeral five, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the counselor's request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselors?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Littkey to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next, we'll move to our active agenda, Roman numeral six, item A, Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Contract Ambulance Purchase, considering accepting the price proposal submitted by Braun Northwest Incorporated per the HGAC contract number AM 10-23 for one ambulance in the amount of $277,805, and authorizing staff to move forward with the purchase of the ambulance.
I move to approve the price proposal submitted by Braun Northwest Inc. per the HGAC contract number AM 10-23 for one ambulance in the amount of $277,805, and authorizing staff to move forward with the purchase of the ambulance.
One second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Kleber to approve the price proposal submitted by Braun Northwest Inc. per the HGAC contract number AM 10-23 for one ambulance in the amount of $277,805, and authorizing staff to move forward with the purchase of the ambulance. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Next up, item D, Recent Statement, CNC 24-4, Considering Approving the Recent Statement of Relevant Criterion Standards. For CNC 24-4, this is an action item. Our city attorney, Jennifer Tangano, is not with us here. Counselors, if you had a chance to review that prior to the meeting, I can try to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Counselor Klein?
I move to approve the recent statement for ZNC 24-4.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer to approve the recent statement for ZNC 24-4. Counselor Klein, I presume your motion was to approve it as written, so that's the way the motion was read. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Uh. Clerk Rocky, could you do a roll call for us, please, for the record?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
The vote was?
Four to two.
Four to two.
Four to two, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Next, we have Item C, Resolution 2024-47, Concerning Approving the 2024 City of Lewiston and Nesperse County Emergency Operations Plan. This is an action item. Councilors, this is a cleanup from last year. The plan was signed by the council, or excuse me, by the county commissioners, kind of. They did not sign it, but we're going to ask that you approve it tonight and I will sign it. This is the 2024 plan, and I would like to just read a couple items here for you that I took a copy of. The Emergency Operations Plan describes the structure by which the city and county government mobilizes resources and conducts response and recovery activities to address the consequences of emergencies or disaster. Local estate assistance is available through mutually agreements, memoranda for understanding, and the emergency management assistant contact. Federal assistance is available under the amended Robert T. Stafford Act to relieve an Emergency Assistance Act. Emergency disaster assistance helps save lives, protect public health, safety, property, the environment, alleviates damage hardship, and reduces future vulnerabilities. This is what we're being asked to approve tonight, and I would sign the county last year passed Resolution Number 24-09-153, and that was recorded with the county. My understanding is that that was signed and recorded, however, the plan itself was not signed, so they're going to have to revisit that, too. And then I also want to just let you know that one of the items in there that was updated this year was that there has to be an order of succession in the event of emergency for the city of Lewiston, i.e. if the city were to, you know, experience a very tragic event. And the continuity of government goes like this. First, the mayor, second, the council president, third, council members by seniority, fourth, the community development director, fifth, the public works director, and sixth, the finance director. So that's just a couple of tidbits from the plan, and my ask is that you pass this tonight. I'll sign it. This is retro. They have a 2025 plan that they will bring before you here shortly that has been written. Excuse me, but we're going to ask them to explain a few things to you before I ask you to present. Counselor?
I move to approve Resolution 2024-47.
Second.
It was moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Littke to approve Resolution 2024-47. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Next up, Item D, Resolution 24-48, Concerning Approving a State-Local Agreement for Project Number A 024, Perine 607, End Perine Between the City of Lewiston, well, in the Idaho Transportation Department. This is an action item, and we have our Public Works Director Dustin Johnson with this here. Director, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. I promise I won't introduce myself once. I've got the next four, and I hope I will keep all these projects straight, but please excuse me if I get cross-connected here. What is in front of you tonight is a local agreement for improvements on Eighth Street. This is a program which is L-SIP. Collectively, in the state of Idaho, we call it Safety Program. This is solely based off of accident data and traffic volumes, and so it is essentially, you program the data into a spreadsheet and it spits it out and you get a score. And if you're qualified based off of the merits of the project, you're awarded or not awarded. Unfortunately, there are criteria such as serious injury and fatality accidents that raise projects higher on this. This is a corridor that has experienced fatalities, and so we applied for lighting, basically trying to make the corridor safer. And so if you look at Eighth Street and we're talking from Main Street all the way to basically where it ties into Brighton Canyon, there's several intersections that are not, they don't meet, they do not currently meet our lighting standards, and then there's a lack of turn lanes in a couple heavily traveled intersections. And so what you have in front of you tonight is the first phase of this project, which is to have hire an engineer, do an analysis and a concept design, then they will come back and move this forward. They have tabulated $2 million for this project, and we'll talk about it later, but most federal projects, at least in Idaho, the federal dollar amount is 92.66%, so we pick up that rest of the percentage of that. So the state is putting forward total $1.853 million, and the city's going to have to pick up the difference of the 7.34% of $146,000 and change over the life of the project. And that, obviously, anything above the $2 million would be the responsibility of the city. So this is just the first phase and first agreement that we are entering in with LTAC. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Director. Councilors, Counselor Spicklemeyer?
So Director, I'm just wondering in here where you had the budget impact. It says, even though we're accepting the funds, it'll be an amendment to the FY '25 budget. Is that a reasoning because they didn't finish it up until the end of October or something, or why?
Yeah, that's, exactly. That is kind of the problem of a lot of these grants. We get notified that we've been awarded, and it has to run through all the agreements and lawyers in Boise, and a lot of times it straddles. They don't care about our fiscal years, and so we'll get the documentation. We try and get them entered as soon as we are aware, but sometimes you'll even see us enter a lot of these grants and we don't get them, and so they kind of fall by the wayside. This is one that wasn't entered. So, yeah, it is a, it's a fiscal calendar scheduling issue.
Thank you. Counselor Littke?
Just a follow-up to that. It did say in here that the amendment would happen in August. Is that just, we usually do that, I think, in May prior, or do we do the amendment in August?
We usually do the amendment in August. Yeah, that's that last reconciliation. The terms are, I'm not comfortable with it. Yeah.
Some reason I thought it was earlier than here. Thank you for a motion.
Counselor Littke?
I have a question.
Will you hold your motion, Counselor Littke? Okay, Counselor Forsman?
What, I've obviously heard you say fatal accidents. What kind of accidents are happening? Is it they're not seeing each other and then they're colliding, or?
I, the last one was an impaired driver. Oh, yeah. That one is, they don't look at, they look at what happened in the accident, they don't look at necessarily the details. Obviously, if there's patterns within that, you know, low visibility or, you know, I don't know, unsafe surface of the roadway, but the most recent one was an impaired driver, and that bumped our score high enough where this one was qualified.
Okay.
Unfortunately, a lot of, I mean, we take a lot of feedback from the public, and we, when we go specifically for some of these federal dollars, you play by their rules. And so this is a great project. It's probably not, it's not the highest, most important project that is in our CIP list right now, but the money was there, it was available, and we met the criteria and we applied and we got it.
Mayor, follow-up?
Counselor Forsman?
And just as a reminder, this grant is only specific to this intersection, correct?
The whole corridor from Main Street.
We can't use it anywhere else.
Correct, correct. You'll see that the pathway that connected Snake River Avenue that went up, that was another federal grant. That one was 100%. That was obviously not the highest and best, you know, important project that the city wanted to do, but it met all of the criteria. It was free, essentially, from the city taxpayers. We built it. So you see that a lot, and we try and fit these projects where we get the most bang for our buck, and this is one where we're going to get $2 million of improved lighting and a safer corridor. I didn't say in my presentation, but there's another Idaho grant, Transportation Alternative Program, that will fix the lights, will fix the intersections that need improvement, and will also address the non-compliant ADA sidewalks in this corridor, too. But that's a separate grant at a separate time.
Thank you.
Counselor Littke?
I move to approve Resolution 2024-48.
Second.
It was moved by Counselor Littke, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer to approve Resolution 2024-48. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Next, we have Item A, Second Supplemental Agreement to TR 023 Professional Services Agreement, Concerning Approving the Second Supplemental Agreement with Horrocks Engineers Inc. in Idaho Transportation Department for the TR 023 Snake River Avenue from Southway Bridge to 11th Avenue Project and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Director Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's interesting that these are back-to-back on the agenda tonight. What you see here is the supplemental for the engineering design services for the Snake River Road construction project that is scheduled to take place next summer. To give you a little bit of history, this was all the original supplement. It's funny, I couldn't figure out why, has nothing to do with Southway Bridge. That was the original project, and it's been broken up into phases so that the original phase that was constructed was the roundabout there at Southway and Snake River. Phase two now, which is what we're considering here, takes it from the roundabout to 11th and improve that. This is money that is also federal allocated. The city gets a direct allocation through our MPO. It's surface transportation projects, so we get a direct allocation. We take our turn throughout the state, so every other MPO in the state of Idaho gets a bite of our, bite of the apple. As the funds become available, our projects are then funded, and so Snake River is now the number one in the state. This one has been long programmed before I think anybody was here, at least in the council, and before I got to the city of Lewiston. It was designed and then it sat on the shelf for many years. And now what this contract will do is update the environmental contracts, update all of the standard specifications and details, update the cost estimates, and then get it packaged and ready for construction, out to bid as soon as possible. I think as, as the last project, this is a federal project, so it is budgeted at, or federal dollars are 92.66, and the states or cities match is 7.34%. And there's more reimbursable money coming down the line from, from the feds to fund the entire project at that same rate.
Counselor Littke?
Clarify that. So we're, we are getting the plan spruced up, then we will go after the, I think it's like 3.7 million that's available to actually then take it to bid, because I was a little confused in the staff report. It said the project will be bid in spring of 2025, but that is the actual?
Yes, that 4.7 number is what we have allocated currently.
More motion.
Counselor Littke?
I'd move to approve the second supplemental agreement between the city of Lewiston, Horrocks and Jurnier Incorporated, and the Idaho Transportation Department, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. It was moved by Counselor Littke, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer to approve the second supplemental agreement between the city of Lewiston and Horrocks Engineers Inc. and the Idaho Transportation Department, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. And next up, we have Item F, Second Change Order, WW 052, WWTP Waterline Extension, Concerning Approving Change Order Number 202 in the amount of $74,189.94 with Cray Construction, Inc. for the Lewiston Wastewater Treatment Plant Waterline and Extension, Perine WW 052, End Perine Project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the change order. This is an action item. Once again, Public Works Director Dustin Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In front of you here is, if you recall, this, it was summer, fall, we did a water line extension. This was somewhat indirectly tied to the water or the upgrades at the wastewater plant. We needed to upgrade the water system that feeds that water plant or the wastewater plant. It's a, it's a single line that runs, I forget the name of the street, but out there on North Lewiston that feeds the wastewater treatment plant. We needed premise isolation and we needed more water, and so that is why it was funded. It was one of the oldest lines in town, and it was funded solely through enterprise funds by the wastewater since they were the, they were the ones, the developer on this one. Going into the project, we found a couple, a change of conditions. There was one that I already approved since it was within my purchasing policy or ability, which was just a storm line conflict, which was only $5,500. But now this is the Phase Two, or the Change Order Two, is now pushing it into where it's going to be before you tonight. The first item identified was road-based material, so as we find a lot in Lewiston, the historic road base might not have been built to the way we'd like to build them today, so we need to, they milled out the asphalt, found a substandard subbase, and so they had ripped that out and bring it back up to standard, and that was $28,000 for that. There was, it was interesting, at the time, Twin City Foods had a pipe that went underneath the river, and then there, it was just processed water, and it was sprayed upon the hillside that's almost directly behind you. They found that on accident, and they didn't know what it was because it wasn't an active line, so that caused some delays as far as identification. Can we just blow through it? Is it, we kept it live, so we had to move the water line under that. That was another $9,300. And then there was some stuff that was the tie-in where the water came in, and so there was some more deficient infrastructure that we're tying into that created more delays and changes of what we're trying to do, and those were $36,000 of just unknown material that we were tying into. So all told, that was $74,189.
Director, we have, we're fortunate to have with us tonight some members of the public. Can you just tell them very briefly what enterprise funds are? I don't want to make any assumptions about this so they know how we're spending their dollars.
Sorry, yes. Enterprise funds, so everything that you pay for as far as utility. So currently, the city has four enterprise funds. One is sanitation, so your garbage bills go for solely sanitation and waste collection and deposit into the landfill. Water, wastewater, stormwater. So I know a lot of people are concerned about where money goes in the city. Specifically, all of those enterprise funds are independent, I guess if you want to call it a business, that we cannot allocate dollars from sanitation and pay off a water debt or vice versa. And so we keep those separate, and so when I talk about enterprise funds, we specifically carve out any project that has anything to do with the wastewater project comes specifically from the wastewater enterprise fund.
Counselor Littke? Thank you, Director.
For a motion.
Okay, we have some questions. Your Counselor Klein?
My, my question is if the Twin City property owners are on the hook for any of the abandoned pipes that we had to pay $9,386 for?
Yeah, that, so that, the, the, the contract, we actually looked, not for this case, but for a separate case, when they gave up ownership or operation of those lines, they, the ownership went, reverted back to the city. So those are essentially ours now. Yeah, so they're, they are, they are our line, and they made the decision, it was going to be, I shouldn't say cheaper, but we didn't want to mess them up and then have maybe to use them someday, so we just went under them. But the biggest delay was it cost two days to figure out what the heck is this.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. So Director, I'm just wondering if I read this wrong in your summary here, but it says the project was completed. Do we normally do the change orders after the project's completed?
Yes. Typically, we, so the staff makes a call in the field, and this is the decision that they made because we can't, for a larger, you're hitting on a very good point, because a lot of times we have high-dollar change orders, and the schedule, we just have to keep moving along because we're paying standby to the contractor. So we negotiate these in, in general, good faith with the contractor. But, yeah, I, I'm, I'm missing an attorney right now, but I don't know what would happen if, we would have to go back. If, if council declined to sign this change order, we would go back to Cray and ask them, you know, if there was something specific that you had heartache with, like the Twin City Food Lines, we would go back and try and resolve that. But that, that's the chicken and the egg kind of thing where a lot of times, these come on my desk on lower dollar amounts, and I can, I can vet out the details or staff can kind of feed me these things. But when we get into these higher dollar amounts, you're paying standby time, and you got to make a decision, and so, yeah, you're, you're basically ratified. And so, yeah, you're basically ratifying a decision that's been made.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Littke?
I'd move to approve Change Order Number Two in the amount of $74,189.94 with Cray Construction Incorporated for the Lewiston Waste Water Treatment Plant Waterline Extension, WW052 Project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the change order.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Littke, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve Change Order Number Two in the amount of $74,189.94 with Cray Construction, Inc. Lewiston Waste Water Treatment Plant Waterline Extension, print WW052 and print project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the change order. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Clerk Brockie and Director Johnson. We'll move on to Item G, Task Orders, Number 27 and Number 30 for WW500, 2019 to 2024 Waste Water Collection System Improvements, concerning approving Task Orders Number 27 and Number 30 with JUB Engineers for WW500, 2019 to 2024 Waste Water Collection System Improvements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the task orders. This is an action item. Director Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So if you recall, in August, we had a large wastewater contract paid for by wastewater funds, and this was with contractor Titan Technologies. They've done a lot of work for us locally. They've kind of got a niche in the market where they do trenchless work, so they do slip lines, so they don't have to dig up the entire wastewater line. They can do it very efficient. So they've come in and put a bit together. And back in August, if you recall, we ran into some permitting, environmental, on some areas that we thought we could get the green light on. And so we did a deduct change order on that and took that portion of the project offline, and then basically went back down to the bottom of the list. And what we had money, room for in the budget, we added that to that contract. So that contract was done in August, where we took this portion out and added a bunch more in there, since they were willing to do that. So what this contract is, is to take the administering engineer and basically do the same thing. So we took a deduct for the portions that they're not doing and reduced it, and then took another task order and added basin 7A, 6A, 6E, which were added for. So now this basically matches the work that has been contracted out to the engineering oversight that they'll be doing with that work. Scheduled to start soon.
Counselor Littke?
More motion.
Motion's in order, counselor.
I'd move to approve Task Orders Number 27 and Number 30 with JUB Engineers Incorporated for WW500, 2019 to 2024 Waste Water Collection System Improvements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the task orders.
It's been moved by Counselor Littke, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve Task Orders Number 27 and Number 30 with JUB Engineers, Inc. for WW500, 2019 to 2024 Waste Water Collection System Improvements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the task orders. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Director Johnson and Clerk Brockie. Next, we'll move to Roman Number Eight, Unfinished and New Business. Item A, City Councilor Comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselor Forsman?
Well, as the mayor has stated, as far as if it's going to come before council, we cannot discuss it. So we're not able to discuss what some of the public came here about due to Idaho code. But it is coming up at a future meeting, so keep an eye on the city website. I thought it was December 24th, but I don't want to bet on that. So just keep an eye on the city website for that future meeting, and then we can discuss it when it is on an agenda following Idaho code.
Thank you, counselor. Other council comments? Council President Kleberg?
The mayor may not be here for the 23rd. I should know within a week.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Item B, City Boards and Commissions Liaison Updates. Counselor Kleberg?
Yeah, just let everybody know, there will not be an URA meeting tomorrow at City Hall. That's normally when the date would be, but we still have an MPO meeting on Thursday night. And I'm just throwing this out here, because we're going to have a new city councilor at some point in time, but I have had a problem making it to the library board meetings. Those Wednesday nights don't work out for me. So I'm throwing that kind of back in your hat, that we might want to maybe do a poll. It's a good group of folks, and I enjoyed the meetings I was at, but Wednesday nights just don't work out.
Thank you, Councilor President Kleberg. Counselor Littke?
Just quickly, the Disability Advisory Commission meets this week. I think they are having good conversation. I do hope that as you assign new tasks, somebody really dives into that. They have a lot of good insight on how we improve, especially our city's accessibility, including sidewalks. And there's a pretty in-depth conversation about how we improve and extend our public transportation. I would also like to talk about our Emergency Powers Board. That's a joint powers board with the county. I was in Boise last week and was able to visit with some legislators in regards to improving our next-generation 911 access, which is, I believe, very important to our first responders, but also to our citizens that may or may not have access to good cellular services. So imagine driving to your favorite remote part of Idaho and not being able to access 911. This bill would be able, would allow for funding to build up and allow neighbor, or excuse me, communities like ours to invest and improve access. If you've made a 911 call along Snake River Avenue, it is hit or miss whether you get the right dispatch on your first attempt. And so I've made quite a few phone calls from that area. I've been until I've reached the correct dispatch on the line for four minutes. And you will hear our emergency response folks talk about the... Four minutes is a long time in an emergency, so it's very important work. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work on that after my leaving the city. And then I just want to shout out to Valley Vision. I've served as a board member and will resign from there as well this month. But I was one of their biggest critics when I joined this council, and I have seen a complete turnaround in an act, active board and administration really work to bring growth and really impactful growth and good growth to our community. And while we're not seeing things happen overnight, I believe that we will start to see the impact of that. And so I do hope that people pay attention to Valley Vision, go to their website, ask questions with their executive director, if you're so inclined, and find out what they're doing that is truly going to help our community.
Thank you, counselor. Other council comments?
Public Works meeting is next Wednesday on 215 D Street at 12:00 PM, if you would like to go. It's very informative, and you get to learn a lot about roads, projects, futures. And I've learned a lot being on it. Also, I just had the Historic Preservation Meeting, and I just want to huge shout out to them. They're hugely knowledgeable in the time that they dedicate and the work they put in to keep the historical aspects of downtown area is admirable, and obviously, it's volunteer. And so I appreciate those people that take the time to read and really engage and make sure they're making proper decisions for the people, the businesses that are looking to make improvements in that area. So I just want to commend them for their hard work.
Counselor? Counselor Schroder?
Well, Counselor Kleberg and Counselor Forsman took away all my thunder, but the Public Works Advisory Commission is next Wednesday, and... That's all I have to duplicate.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Mayor, update on the Parks and Rec Commission. We haven't had a meeting in the last two or three months. The next scheduled is January 15th. It's mainly due to the lack of quorum. I think it had a lot to do with Director Barker leaving and kind of some organization issues, but our next one is scheduled for January 15th.
Counselor Klein?
The only meeting I was supposed to go to this, since last week, was the cemetery meeting, and it was canceled due to not having a quorum after being there for 20 minutes. Can I speak on, am I allowed to speak on the commissions? Look, I just wanted to tell people that we do have four openings still on different commissions. Cemetery and Urban Forestry Commission, Code Board of Appeals, Emergency Medical Service Advisory Board, and the Urban Renewal Agency. And any support we can get from the community would be very beneficial, so we can have these meetings and get things accomplished.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Schroder?
May I go back to councilor comments, just for a moment? I was walking the dog this morning, and they are already starting work on the Normal Hill Pioneer Park Playground. They were scooping up the bark and getting it ready to dismantle that or whatever they're going to do to better. So I was excited to see that, because it's come before us, and we like to see action. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, mayor comments. I'm going to pick on a couple of things. For Counselor Klein, I mentioned Cemetery, Urban Forestry. Thank you. I will be helping, I have offered to help them do some updates on their master plan, and I've not heard back from them. I've emailed them, so I hope that they do that, because we need to work on that. And again, some of this is because of the changes in the staff over at Parks and Rec, but we're trying to work through some of these things. I do want to thank the SBA for coming out tonight, making the effort to be here and sharing with the public about disaster loans for homeowners and renters. That's very important. We had a lot of impact in our larger community here last summer, and they're making themselves available. So I hope the message gets out, and people take advantage of that. Counselor Kleberg mentioned some changes possibly in committee council work. And so I will remind the council that we will have a new member, we'll appoint a new member in January. And should you desire, a council member could make a motion to reassign counselors to different committees, should they choose to do that. So if you want to try something else for a year, or just get off something, you would be able to do that. But that would be the time, Council President Kleberg, that we could address that. And then lastly, I want to share a letter with you that I received recently, and it was forwarded to me by our Lewiston Police Chief, Jason Kuzic, who will be joining us back again next week, I believe. And he shared this letter, so I just want to read this to you. This is from the U.S. Department of Justice, Joshua D. Hurwitz, United States Attorney for the District of Idaho, dated December, if I can do this, dated December 2nd, 2024. The letter was addressed to Cody Bloomsburg, Detective Corporal, Lewiston Police Department in the matter of United States versus Villa, United States versus Pier, and United States versus Downer. Dear Detective Bloomsburg, I'm writing to commend you for your excellent work on the child exploitation investigations involving Eric Villa, David Pier, and Joshua Downer. As you know, all three defendants have pleaded guilty to child exploitation offenses. Villa and Pier have already been sentenced to significant prison terms, and Downer is awaiting sentencing on a stipulated joint 15-year prison recommendation. These extraordinarily results would not have been possible without your thorough and meticulous work in the investigations into these three offenders. In all three cases, your adept interviews of the defendants uncovered critical evidence that was integral to securing their convictions. Because of your work in Villa, a prolific distributor of child sexual abuse material is now off the streets. And your efforts in Pier and Downer ensured that two serial offenders were held accountable for their egregious acts committed while on supervised release. Your work in each of these cases had made Idaho a safer place. Your expertise in child abuse investigation was beyond valuable in these cases, as it has been and continues to be in many other cases. Our office is grateful for your partnership in all you do to protect Idaho's children. Sincerely, Josh Hurwitz, U.S. Attorney. So I just want to share that with you, because that's not sometimes the pretty part of public service, but it's a necessary part. And we have, in this case, Detective Bloomsburg, Corporal Bloomsburg, who's, you know, serving our community and putting his life on the line and helping, you know, protecting Idaho's children. So that's a pretty worthy cause, and I would just like to share that with you and ask you to keep him and all of our officers that are involved in these types of policing so important to our community, just to keep them in your thoughts too. So we're very grateful for that service. Next item is Item D, and I will not be making a motion this evening. And this will come back before you. Our last item is Item E, Agenda Topics. Counselors? Counselor Klein?
I'd like to move to direct staff to bring options for auctioning off the Fifth and Brighton property on the January, at the January 6th work session.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroder. Did you capture that?
No.
Clerk Brockie?
It was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Second by Counselor Forsman.
Not all of it. Could you repeat it?
Yeah.
Please.
Maybe hold the microphone up a little bit, so everyone can hear you.
Move to direct staff to bring options for auctioning the Fifth and Brighton property to the January 6th work session.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Forsman, to bring the Fifth and Brighton property up for consideration to explore options. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselor. Counselor, that brings us to Roman Number Nine, Adjournment.
Mayor?
Counselor Littke?
I'd move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Littke, second by Council President Kleberg to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
May I leave?